Called this meeting to order, Zebulon Board of Commissioners Work Session 5:10:22. Is there approval of the agenda?
So moved. Second?
Moving in second, all in favor? Motion pass. Budget? We recognize Town Manager.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the Board. Tonight is the Board's first budget work session for the fiscal year '23. The outline of tonight's presentation will include an introduction to the capital budget. We'll provide some background information about funding sources and destinations. Some of this will be old news to you, but we've got new Board members, so it's always worth a revisit. And we'll get into some of the specific recommendations that are included in the FY23 budget that's been recommended to you. The first area that we'll focus upon is the storm drain fund, and I will recognize Chris Ray of our Public Works Department to describe the recommendation that we've included in the budget. And then I'll recognize Fire Chief Chris Perry to talk about service equipment recommendations. Then we'll roll into the operating budget. At the handout of the FY23 budget, you received the memos and the spreadsheets for the requested budgets from Parks and Rec, from Fire Department, and the Operations Division of Public Works. And so we're here to take any questions or comments or requests that you have from those handouts, and we'll open it up to public input. And then we'll provide a work session or a preview of the second work session, so we'll hand out the memos and the spreadsheets from the Police Department and the Planning Department, and we'll hand out capital information on facilities, parks, community, and economic development, and we'll provide you the fee schedule, so you can start to review that before the second work session. And then there was brought up at the last meeting that there is a conflict with the next meeting, and so we've come up with three options for the Board to consider. So while we have noted on the agenda moving it to Thursday at 4:00 p.m., that's your call. So we can move it later in the day on the Wednesday, move it to the Thursday at 4:00 p.m. if you want an earlier start, or move it to the following day at 6:00 p.m., which is the typical time for the budget work sessions. So with that, we'll get right into the capital budget funding sources. So I have on the screen the five major revenue streams that fund your capital projects. The first is property tax. The second is development fees or development contributions. The third is sales tax. The fourth is your fund balance. And the fifth is fees that you collect for services. So first on property tax, back in 2016, we recommended that the Board dedicate five cents of the property tax to go towards capital projects. Back then, one cent generated $80,000, so to give you some context, in the six years since then, you've close to doubled in population as best we can tell, but you've definitely doubled in your property tax value since then, because a one cent will now generate $160,000. What we did back then was dedicate two cents to streets, so that was specifically for street paving. We've had some other funds come available, and so you can use those street funds for other things other than paving. You can use them for transportation improvements. But back in 2016, we dedicated two cents to streets. We dedicated two cents to the fleet, so we had a fleet that had been untended and had not been reinvested, and we had a lot of vehicles that were not serviceable or reliable, so we dedicated two cents to the fleet. Half a cent to what we called feet, or greenway specifically. The town had just adopted a greenway master plan, but had no way to implement it. That greenway has since been constructed, and so you've got some options on how to reallocate that portion for greenways. We've got recommendations that you'll see in the upcoming work session to put it towards transportation, specifically sidewalks, but you could also put that towards your Parks and Rec master plan implementation. And then the last part of that five cent increase was a half cent dedicated to facilities. We had what was considered to be a lot of new facilities, so we had a community center that came online. We had this facility, the Police Department, that came online, but at that time, they were getting up in age, and so we needed to reinvest in those facilities. So that was the last portion of that 2016 five cent dedication of the property tax. And a couple of years later, we had to replace a fire engine and a fire ladder, and we needed to get on a cycle to replace fire engines every eight years. We had a couple of fire engines, or one fire engine that was going to have to be replaced on a sooner cycle than the eight-year cycle. And so dedicated 1.7 cents to fire fleet, so that was to pay for the lease payments or the loan payments for a fire engine, for a ladder, and then to put into savings for the procurement of an engine that would, the needs would come on sooner than that eight-year cycle. Last year, dedicated .7 cents of the property tax to go towards stormwater, so you used to charge a fee, you can still charge a fee, but we recommended, at least because the fee revenue was going to be greater if you put it to property tax, because we, majority are commercial base rather than residential base, and given that, we couldn't really demonstrate to the average citizen what their stormwater fee was showing. So the day will come, you'll reintroduce a fee, but not today. And then the last thing was, as I mentioned, back in 2016, a cent generate $80,000, it now generates $160,000. There would be growth from those dedicated property tax revenues to go towards new needs. New needs examples being the service equipment that we'll talk about tonight, as well as information technology that we'll talk about at a future work session. So that's the breakdown of the property tax. You also get contributions from the development community, so they pay transportation impact fees. So a residential structure that comes in, it's going to generate a certain amount of traffic, it's going to impact transportation improvement downstream, typically at an intersection, so your transportation impact fee structure is set up to fund signalization or intersection improvements. You also have started this year charging a recreation impact fee, and you will hear at the next work session that that is doing very well. The development community is also responsible for constructing, so they have to physically construct road improvements in front of their frontage. There are times where it is impossible for them to construct their half of the construction, so if a roadway is required to be a median, you can't construct half of a median, so in those cases, we'll accept the fee and loom. So those are the development funding sources for capital projects. Sales tax, we dedicate, for the past few years, we pulled out $50,000 of the sales tax revenue, the idea being that that revenue go back into fund community and economic development projects. The idea being if you put more money into community economic development projects, that will improve business activity, which will increase sales tax revenue coming in. And then Powell bill, which is your gas tax, and has to go towards street paving projects. And fund balance, you have reserve accounts, so anytime that we have a savings in a particular project, we will send the savings from that project to the associated reserve and lock it up there. You also have unassigned fund balance, so this is money that's not committed, it's not restricted, you can use it how you best see fit. And then the last area is, we collect a couple of fees. We collect a yard waste fee, and this is dedicated primarily to replacing what we'll talk about at a future work session, the medium-duty vehicles. We also collect a motor vehicle tag. So the motor vehicle tag, in conjunction with the Powell bill, now funds your street paving. So we've got a dedicated paving program that we can do every year and start to catch up on the pavement rating of our streets, and as a result, free up some of that, what was dedicated from the property tax to streets, maybe to other areas, whether they be thoroughfare improvements or whatever the Board sees fit. I've rambled quite a bit. Part of this is for education, so I'll pause to see if there's any questions or comments. Where does that money go? So here are the different funds, and when you receive the full spreadsheet, and you have an example of the spreadsheet from last year, and I printed off last year's storm drainage fund, but here are the different funds. So you've got a transportation fund, where that revenue that I just talked about goes to street paving, to intersection improvements. Intersection improvements means signalization, but also means addition of lanes. Thoroughfares, north Arrendal widening being an example, and the, what was at one time called greenways, bicycles, and it should have been P for pedestrians, but now we call that our Walk Zebulon. This is where are there missing gaps within our sidewalk network? So those are the different types of projects within the transportation fund. Storm drainage has its own fund. Fleet and Equipment has three divisions, so the amount of property tax that's dedicated towards fleet, we've got a reasonable source of money there to go to light-duty vehicles. It's very close, as you'll see in future work sessions. The heavy duty, that primarily, if not exclusively, is the Fire Department vehicles, and so we've got a dedicated property tax revenue that goes to that. Medium-duty, we're looking to fund those replacements through that yard waste fee, and we did that last year, and we're proposing that again this year. The other funds are service equipment, and you'll get a presentation tonight on service equipment, on what that is. Information technology, so that's to keep the town secure, but also provide the devices, such as the computers that we use here. Property management, last year, we broke that into two areas, so that used to be primarily focused on facilities, but we broke out a separate fund now to include parks, and as I mentioned, community and economic development is your last fund. So again, I'll pause to see if there's any questions or comments on the funding destinations. All right. You have before you a spreadsheet. This is last year's spreadsheet on stormwater. I'm doing this, providing this partly as a way to explain the budget, but also as a segue to provide as a springboard to Mr. Ray coming up and making his presentation. So if you take a look at the top left of that spreadsheet, you will see the projects that we recommended last year. So $110,000 was recommended for the East Vance street replacement. You have awarded the bid of that project. That project came in over that budget amount, and we pooled money, and you approved money from Stormwater Capital Reserves to fund that. Let me skip MS4 audit for a minute. And we also funded and completed a stormwater condition assessment, so that's what Mr. Ray is going to be talking about quite a bit, about what that stormwater condition assessment revealed. And so those are the two projects that you funded in the current fiscal year that we're moving forward on. One project that we have not moved forward on is the MS4 audit. So MS4 is a permit that you are granted through the state of North Carolina that the Environmental Protection Agency requires. So any town that operates a stormwater system, a water system, or a sewer system, has to get a permit to operate that system. And essentially, what the system says is, are you good caretakers of that system? Meaning, are you doing things to minimize pollution? And so the MS4 audit, I mean, I'm sorry, the MS4 permit that the town has, has things in there like testing for off-site runoff, has public education programs, has stormwater retention, and erosion control protection measures. Our permit is coming up for renewal next year. That doesn't necessarily trigger a review, but we do want to get a sense of where we are. We did not move forward with this program because we had a change in personnel, and the person responsible for this program, there's a vacancy there. And I bring that point up, not only to explain why we didn't move forward on it, but the other thing is, whenever we're talking to you about projects, we're talking about both funding and staff. The funding might be there, but if we don't have the staff to execute it, that's going to be something that we need to talk about. So just to want us to be so focused on funding, we also have to talk about personnel, to make sure that we've got the personnel for that. So those are the projects that were recommended, and here's where the revenue came from. So that $210,000, this current year's budget, we recommended $63,000 come out of the Stormwater Capital Reserves. Again, capital reserves, that you have all different types of capital reserves, but these were savings related to stormwater projects, so we used $63,000 out of that. We use the dedicated portion of the property tax from stormwater. At that time, it was around $97,000, so it'll be more as your tax base grows. And then we dedicated $50,000. So that $50,000 for the MS4 permit, you will see when we roll over funds, we're just going to hold on to that $50,000 and roll over for the coming fiscal year to do that MS4 permit audit. So that's where the expenditures were, that's where the revenues came from. If you look further down on that spreadsheet, so go back up to the top, we told you last year that the 2023 projects were going to be dependent upon the stormwater condition assessment results. So you will get those results tonight. The $103,000 was not to indicate that the results were going to reveal a $103,000 project. That $103,000 is what we expected to be the revenue generated from the property tax that's dedicated to stormwater. Mr. Ray will share with you a project that well exceeds that amount, and he will propose and will recommend where to get those funds from. You will see as you go to the bottom, and this is, which is on the screen, is a compressed version of what you have as a handout, and that's done so you can see it visually on the screen. But if you look to the right of the screen, you'll see the total proposed expenditures between FY23 and FY23 is close to $5 million. If we dedicate the 103 to what I assume will be $110,000 to $115,000 per year in that dedicated property tax revenue, there's no way that we're going to be able to approach upon the stormwater needs that we've got in front of us. And so if you look to the very far right in that spreadsheet, that's why we've listed this note, that at some point, you'll need to consider a bond referendum to construct these projects as well as other projects, so road projects, fire stations being another. Strategies such as staggering the project. When we say stagger the project, we mean build the project in phases. We do that when we can. Sometimes we can't phase a project, we have to build it all at once. We will, as always, seek support, whether that's through the EPA, or if a developer is coming in and we know an improvement needs to be made, we can wrap that up into their improvement of their property. Or, as is typical with federal programs, the names change, so what was the ARC funds is now the ARP funds, and that is what we're identifying as your funds for the projects that we'll talk about tonight. And so with that, I will introduce Public Works Director, Chris Ray.
Good evening, the Mayor, members of the Board. Tonight, I want to come in front of you and talk to you a little bit about the American Rescue Plan Act and the funds that we will be receiving. To date, I just want to remind you that we received a little over $924,000, and the remaining $924,000 approximately will come in fall of '22. So we've got half the funds in house now and on account, and the other half will be coming this fall. Couple of things to remember about the American Rescue Plan Act funds, that all these funds have to be obligated by December 31, 2024. What does that mean? We need to be under contract for construction, design, construction administration, et cetera, to obligate all these funds. Compliance with the uniform guidance provisions. Basically, what that is, is elevated federal conditions of a grant. Basically, it could be something simple as Buy America, it could be additional record-keeping that we had to do for like our greenway project, it could be additional bidding requirements, it could be Davis Bacon for federal wage correspondence, making sure people are paid appropriately, could be certified payrolls. That's just a handful of examples that require you to have an elevated requirement for bidding and using these funds. Currently, records retention is always a big piece of grants. This one is five years, and anytime you spend over $750,000 in a single year, you're required to have a special audit requirements, and typically a single audit, which means basically you have separate financial statements for that project. All right? As Joe mentioned, this past year, this Board funded a stormwater feasibility study. That came about, as some of you may recall, West Lee Street, we had a collapse last year, got us thinking about, we have a lot of old infrastructure in town, and we need to take a look at it. We also needed to do it to look at it from a capital budgeting exercise, to see where we needed to invest long-term. So this past September, we hired the Wooton Company to help us with that. We used site visits, we reused the existing mapping system we have, we camered all the lines in this corridor that we had. The camera, if you're not familiar, would help, and it will show some pictures of it, helps with the condition, analysis of the pipe, if it's cracked, if it's broken, if it's separated joints, any type of situation that may be occurring on the inside that you can't see from above. Also, we ran hydraulic analysis based on the basin that's there, and from a high level to see what the hydraulic capacity is. What how much volume can this pipe handle? Can it handle our standard two- and 10-year design requirements that we have for all new developments? Through this process, we identified six projects, and like I say, this is kind of a high-level overview. The total of all six projects is $5.6 million. All right? So let's get a little more deeper into what we looked at. Here's the study area. Basically, I call it the heart and original of the original Zebulon. Arrendal Avenue is considered the break point, even when it was in water and sewer, we had sub-basins. Arrendal Avenue was considered the crest, and everything broke east and west of it. And so if you look closely there, the colors pretty much correspond with that. A lot of this infrastructure in this area is at least 75 years old, is made up of a variety of different materials, from clay pipe to corrugated metal pipe, some RCP pipe, some plastic. We have a wide variety of materials out in the field, and some of them are, it could be in excess of 100 years old, and as old as Zebulon. Definitely, the issues that we were starting to see with some of these things is currently pipe condition. We also clearly saw some hydraulic issues with the volume of water that it could handle in a storm event. And of course, a big one that was worrying us quite a bit is, some of these are significantly under existing buildings, existing houses. So if you have a collapse or something, it's not ideal. It's not like it's on the side of the street and it only affects a few people. This could affect the operations of our business area. And potentially, there's a home or two, that's also. All right? Similar that you've seen, we've done with our street paving reports, that we evaluate the conditions that we found. You may have heard the acronym for pavement condition rating is PCR for our streets. We use something very similar for our stormwater, SCR, stormwater condition rating. This time, we broke these six area projects into five different categories to help us rate them, and which one's the most important. We gave 40 points to if it was up under a structure, if a building was on it, a warehouse, a house, or something like that, a railroad track. Pipe conditions, is that pipe in good shape? Has it got, is it stress cracked? Has it fractured? Separated joints? The pipe sizing was 20 points. That means the volume, can it handle the volume that's flowing through that area? And then we put a section in there for public perception. Is there like flash flooding that maybe a resident is seeing on their property, or maybe even in the street? So we basically worked with the engineering team, came up with this model, and we evaluated each of those six projects. You'll see here Drainage Area 1 and Drainage Area 3 rated the highest at 90 points, the second one was 80 points, and of course, higher the score means the worst overall condition. Let's talk about our two priorities. The first priority is, other two, is the West Horton Street Basin Improvement, which scored 90 points. Some of the major issues that we'll share with you is, the infrastructure is significantly under several major buildings. The pipe sizing is hydrologically undersized, meaning it will not handle a 10-year storm event. Basically, a 10-year storm event is a 1 in 10 chance that the rainfall will exceed the capacity of that pipe. Now, that 1 in 10 chance could be this year, next year, or it could be 10 years. You don't know when that is, but it's basically a 10% probability that the volume flow will exceed or meet that design criteria. And then the last piece that we found, quite a bit of this pipe is fractured or And then the last piece that we found, quite a bit of this pipe is fractured, or maybe I would deem completely, completely broken. All right. I know this map's a little hard to see, especially for our audience members, but I'm going to try to explain this. This is Vance Street across here, oh no, excuse me, West Horton Street across here. This splits under, under the building what is known as Old Diamond Glass, is what I refer to as owned by the parish. It comes down and goes in between the property owned by the Mathenies, and then also the Davis property that splits between that. It goes under Vance Street, then it's under Whitley Galleries, then it crosses under the railroad track, and then hopefully, part of it is under Harris Funeral Home, and for it, discharges on the other side of West Barbie Streets. So there's the general flow of that. As you can see, that is under several prominent businesses in our downtown quarter. All right? This is the recommendation that the engineers come up with, is to basically abandon in place the infrastructure that's under these buildings, would fill that with flowable concrete, provide structural stability, and also block off the water flow. We would divert water flow down Horton Street towards Church Street, we'd get an easement, picking up this piece here draining from the alley, pull it to Church Street, come around to Vance Street, offset this to get around Whitley Galleries, do a penetration under the railroad, and then we do a jog over here to get around Harris's Funeral Home. So one of the things you'll see there, on the original map that I showed you, all that drainage system was 24 inches in diameter. From here, we're recommending doubling the size of your storm drainage system here to handle the hydraulic flow of water through that area. Actually, we doubled the size of the pipe, but we're actually probably significantly even more than doubling the actual amount of volume of flow that it can handle, from my engineering standpoint. All right. Couple of things, I've mentioned that we cambered this piece. This is a section here between West Horton and Vance. You see here some vertical cracks running along this pipe. The next picture over, you see horizontal cracks here, and what we call in our days of sewer, this is a protruding tap, where basically somebody has tapped into that side of the wall, protruded that pipe in there, assumed some of its capacity, and basically, we're not sure where this pipe goes. So that's never good from a stormwater water quality control standpoint, because somebody could be dropping something down in a floor drain, and it going directly to the streams and creeks. So that would be something we would work with the property owners to abandon. This section here on the lower end here is under Whitley Galleries. You can see here, if you look closely in that on your monitor, probably more than on the screen, there's significantly amount of crack string and fracturing on this pipe. And then over here, you see another illegal tap and protrusion right into the top of it. Looks like black corrugated pipe just sticking right into that. So that could be from a yard inlet, or something that's draining and tied into this. All of these areas here that you see are under buildings and under structures. All right. Let's talk a little bit about the project and the project cost. Here's a couple pictures where you see that storm drainage coming there between the Matheny and the Davis building, and then the bottom pictures under Whitley Galleries. One thing to remember, this project is not designed. It is, we provided cost estimates based on the order of magnitude. Basically, it's a very general estimate based on information we have. It does not include a lot of detailed information from a survey, and you know, utility conflicts and other things we may need to encounter, but we have generated an estimate at this time for 1.5 million, almost 1.6 million dollars. I'm going to stop on this project right here and see if we've got any questions about this one before we go look at the next project. Yes, sir?
Two quick questions. Is there a chance anybody's dumping sewer into this line because of the illegal taps? And number two, do you see any problems once that line's plugged up?
Okay. No, sir, we don't believe there's any wastewater being dumped into there. We didn't see any signs of solids. We didn't see any signs of maybe toilet paper or other debris. So we feel fairly confident from the cameraing, that is not an ongoing thing, it's more like a floor drain or something coming out of the business. What was your second question again, sir?
Once that existing line is plugged up, do you anticipate any problems by any businesses?
That's something we potentially would have to work through. We go in there and do, we could do something as far as dye testing, to determine what's actually flowing in there. We could put a biodegradable, like food-grade coloring that you use in cakes and stuff, something very similar. We can tell where it's coming from, and we can work with the businesses to come up with alternative means to route that maybe to our new system, or come up with other options in form. But that'd be part of the design process, to figure out where these taps are coming from, and what's the best manner to handle them. Any others? Very good questions.
Could you explain a little bit further than just what's on here, the utility relocation allowance portion?
Yes, ma'am. What that is, is anytime we put the storm drainage in, it has to be installed on grade. So basically, it's got to flow downhill. A lot of times, when you're working in streets or crossing streets, you intercept water lines and sewer lines, and so you'll have to go in and relocate that water line, dive it down, bend it under that storm drainage line, and back up. So typically, that's the typical utility relocation. It could be a power pole or something like that, but generally, it's for us, it's water, it's a water line relocation that are on the same grades, and being water is pressurized, we can drop it down and get under it and come back up to that elevation. Good questions. Anybody else?
If a property owner comes in, say, like want to retrofit with the galleries, would they be responsible for any of this?
Potentially, yes, there is. We would definitely would work with the property owners to reroute some of that. Definitely would want to at least secure easements from them. That south, I guess that would be east of that property, or west of that property, we would want to try to secure some easements there, because we have a future project coming. So clearly, we're going to have to work closely with several businesses here to secure easements, and maybe in some situations for redevelopment. All good questions. Any others? Any none? We're going to move on to the next, next, next project here. This project was, it's the West, starts at the West Sycamore Street, and runs down a drainage swell, and it actually runs north to North Arundel Avenue where it discharges over toward Glen Street. Basically, this is the, or the trouble areas here are behind the Autozone, and we're seeing some flash flooding at Gannon and Arundel. This project came to us as part of a PER study we done in 2017 with green engineering. So when we came to it, as far as the Wooton study here, we just hit it on a high level, make sure we confirmed a few results. The '17 study did not do cameraing, we did the cameraing there, so we took the results from the '17 study and the information gained from Wooton to come up with this recommendation here. But the major issues associated here are the hydraulic sizing of the lines, we cannot eat a two- or 10-year storm event. We have some pipe that is on reverse grade. Water generally likes to flow downhill, it doesn't do very well going uphill. We have, part of this project has infrastructure under a building and a house. And we're also, this is the public piece that we mentioned in our SCR, our stormwater condition rating, we're having some flash flooding areas that people may be seeing in town. This map is a little more complicated, and I wish I had a little better one to show you, but if you look, the narrow line here, the red and the blue coming across here is the existing line. You see it starting here on West Sycamore, going back behind Autozone, coming down parallel to Autozone, crossing the street, under the convenience store, under a house, and then eventually discharging out onto Arundel Avenue. This blue line that you see here is the reroute. We regrade this drainage swell here as proposed by these drawings. We secure an easement here, secure easement to the church parking lot, get onto Gannon Avenue, and then secure easements here, relocating it away from the building, and then hopefully coming down here and coming into Arundel Avenue. One of the things that we did doing as this design is, from this preliminary engineering report, is we moved this sewer line, well, storm drainage line out of the road and put it along Arundel Avenue, and are looking to secure easements there. Reason for that is to avoid potential utility conflicts. Also, anytime you open cut NCDOT roads, there's a very good, high probability you have to resurface and overlay that whole street. So to avoid those costs, we did move that line to the west side of Arundel Avenue. One of the challenges with that is, by doing that, we're adding additional easements to secure. To make this total project work, we need 17 easements, that is significant. To date, we have approximately four of those secured in place. One other option that we potentially could look at, if you wanted an environmental feature added to this, is do a constructed wetlands where we could potentially secure some off Glen Street, some vacant property, and do a constructed wetlands. Basically, what that does is a treatment system that basically treats the stormwater before it's discharged into the creek, and it uses a biological process, including vegetation, and sand, and other microorganisms to help filter that water before it's there. So a possibility of adding an environmental feature to this, instead of just relocating, dealing with the capacity issues, and dumping it back into the creek, we could potentially add an environmental feature to it. All right. Let's talk about, here's some pictures, just to help you get a feel for it. You see here that we, you can see in front of, on the first picture, quite a bit of water buildup at the Gannon and Arundel, at the gas station there. You see behind Autozone, some nuisance flooding issues. And then you see also that we had, this project has been designed from an engineering standpoint, environmental permits received, and encroachments received. They are probably need to be updated if we decided to move forward with this project. Couple other pictures here that show the intersection of Gannon and Arundel, and where we talked about the flash flooding. This flooding does occur. When it does occur, it lasts maybe 20 to 30 minutes. A lot of times, it's just, that peak storm, it cannot handle the initial rush, and then the system catches up with it. We have developed a high-level cost estimate for this project, based on the designs and quantities, and is estimated at $1,719,000. That doesn't include the constructed wetlands, excuse me, estimated at 350. It could go down to as little as maybe 1.4 if you took the wetland construction piece out. I will note that the constructed wetlands has not been designed, but it's an offer, an opportunity if we wanted to take advantage of it. With that, I will stop and ask if you've got any questions before we go forward our recommendation to you.
Could you tell me how much more a special audit would cost if that's where the route that we go?
I think it's nominal. I would think it's probably less than $5,000, but I would want to refer to my expert, Mr. Fitz.
Okay.
But I don't believe that's an estimate more in our annual audit process.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Is that good? I got a thumbs up from Bobby, so my estimate's good. Other questions? Any none? Staff's priority is West Horton Street, and a couple reasons for that. It's the pipe, it's got several structural issues, it's under multiple buildings, it's got capacity issues, it cannot handle a 10-year storm event. And I guess our biggest piece is, we want to avoid that emergency response issue, that we get a call that a pipe has collapsed and is adversely affecting the building. And then anything that you notice you do in your personal life, or we do here publicly, that you have to accelerate, that the costs go up. And in a situation like this, our costs could be two to three times higher because of expediting the process, and we don't think that's a wise use of your money. So based on that, we are recommending the West Horton Street be your priority number one project. We're also recommending that you use the American Recovery Plan Act funds to address this project, and we're recommending that you allocate all of those funds to it, due to a couple reasons. We have estimates here, but we have not completed the design. There should be other things we find. The construction market is clearly not stable now and rising quickly, so there is a couple hundred thousand dollars, but those could, that could easily be lost in over the years from, once we go from design permitting and actual construction. So we feel like it fits right up under your threshold of your 1.85 million. With that, that concludes my presentation. Be glad to answer any questions you may have, and if you think of something after hours, you're more than welcome to give me a call. Thank you, guys.
Before I invite Chief Perry up, let me talk a little bit about the background of service equipment fund and how it came about. Wasn't too long that I got here that I was being told that we had a lot of radios to replace within the police department, and then I was told that we had a lot of guns we had to replace, and then I was told we had a lot of turnout gear within the fire department that we had to replace. So all these things were must-have, and they were big slugs of money at one time, and so while they were associated with the operational side of providing police or fire services, these were big capital expenses. And so talked about that growth in property tax revenue. We started dedicating portions of that towards the service equipment budget. So that's the origin and the purpose of the service equipment budget, and to outline the recommendations of this year's service equipment budget. I'll recognize Chief Perry.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. I'll take just a few minutes to go over the FY23 requests related to service equipment. And as Joe very accurately described, our service equipment, what is it? I mean, that's not a title that immediately comes to mind what it is, but the framework or the kind of the definition that we've often used is, added departmental equipment, excluding fleet vehicles, those types of things, that has a usable life of greater than five years, and typically has an acquisition cost of $5,000, or typically more than that. A lot of times, these individual items may not meet that $5,000 threshold, but we don't typically purchase them in a single item. And Joe gave several good examples in his introduction. A couple of more, the police handgun he just mentioned is a good example. The unit cost is not there, but they're exchanged in a purchase, in an all, all purchase type of situation, not just piecemeal. The fire department's breathing equipment likewise, that has a unit cost of about $5,000, but we maintain about 30 of those units. So unfortunately, that's an item, and it typically has about a 15-year service life. And then another example that we use service equipment funding for in the past was the fire department's breathing air compressor, which was about $50,000 when it was purchased several years ago. So that just gives you kind of some history or framework in addition to those that Joe provided. So for FY2223, there were about four items that were requested, and I'll give you just a summary of those items to give you just a little bit of a background with those. The one request came from the police department, but one of the nice things about the police department's item was it was an item that will be, could be used by multiple departments, so I'll talk more about that, and that's in the way of a roadside message boards, a couple of those. And then there were three within the fire department, the firefighter PPE, or turnout gear that Joe referred to, a fire safety house, and then some defibrillators, and I'll give an description of each one of those as we go through tonight. So the message boards, the police department has requested two message boards, which is a total acquisition cost believed to be about $33,500. These are very common, especially associated with our special events. You see those for much any special event or something that's going to have a traffic impact, can also, could be used for ongoing incidents, if we had those to use. Currently, we borrow those message boards from either Wake County or other local police departments that have those. That's a great resource to have those, but unfortunately, we're limited to their availability. And give you, the best example that comes to mind when we talk about availability is, for several years, we used these in October. Well, in October, message boards are very hard to come by because they're all at the state fair, because these are, again, pooled units. So for us to acquire these message boards from these other departments is very difficult in the month of October, especially around the state fair. In the proposal given to us by the police department, they would use a governor's crime commission grant to fund about $24,500 of the cost, which would only leave about $9,000 of that $33,500 for the town to cover. Again, that's for two message boards. The second item that we talked about on my list is the PPE, the turnout gear. Joe made mention of that in the introduction. All of our firefighter PPE has a life cycle of 10 years, so after 10 years, we have to discontinue using it in our active firefighting. So people always ask, well, what do you do with it when it's 10 years and one year old, or 10 years and two days for that matter? And anything that's, once it passes the 10-year mark, it's moved to our junior program, and I can assure you, they use it until it is no longer usable for any type of jacket or pants. So we're really lucky that we've got a program that takes advantage of that gear. So we're really lucky that we've got a program that takes advantage of that gear that we can't use as active firefighters. So when we refer to PPE or our turnout gear, we're talking about the whole ensemble of the helmet, the boots, the coats, the pants, the gloves, and the hood. All of that has that same 10-year life. It costs us about $4,300 per person for the, what you see there. What we do is instead of purchasing these based on the timeframe, we budget for one tenth of that gear every year so that it, it levels out the cost as compared to having one year, we'd come up and have hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of turnout gear to replace. This was an idea that was originally brought to us by Wake County because they have to budget for the entire county's turnout gear, so we annualize that cost. So what you see here is what we call a annual cost of six sets, which is four sets that are at end of life and two, it would be like a new employee or gear that is damaged, I don't know, call it whatever. Typically, we go through more than six sets unfortunately, but six is a good number for us to use each year for budgeting purposes. It's a total cost of $25,800. With our Wake County cost share, they would pay 37.8% of that, which leaves us at a cost of $16,254 for those eight, excuse me, six sets of turnout gear. The next item is the fire safety house. So what you see in the picture, and I want to be clear about this, what you see is the fire safety house that we used to use. It was owned by the Wake County Firefighters Association. This was a huge hit for many, many years as we would take this house and carry it to daycares, to schools, to our public events. And we can teach all kinds of exit drills, smoke detector safety, kitchen fire safety and those type of things. But that house fell into disrepair. An issue with this house was transporting. We always had to maintain a vehicle that we could pull this thing around. So the budget request is for an inflatable fire safety house, which is becoming more of the trend now. So with this, it blows up like a, kind of somewhat like a bouncy house. The good thing is there's no bouncy in the bottom. It's like the bouncy walls, bouncy ceiling, no bouncy floor. It has a hard floor in it. But it has a kitchen in it for teaching fire safety and this type of thing. So we could very easily set this up in a yard of a school where we had to always be careful about where we set up the house. So it was good, we can set this one up in the front lawn of a daycare or what have you. Much better arrangement than what we used in the past. The fire safety house has a cost of $10,000 as you see it illustrated there. The last item that we've got in this year's request for service equipment are defibrillators. The fire department maintains defibrillators on all of our response vehicles. Our medical director, who is in control of almost everything we do medical-wise because we operate under his license, he has defined a five-year replacement. So all of our defibrillators, we do replace those as they become, as they age out. We have three defibrillators which will age out in 2023. So this is the money to, to replace those units. The medical director changes those out every five years for a couple of reasons. One, that keeps them consistent with what the paramedics are carrying. We use the same pads. It collects data. The data that is collected on the defibrillators, we use as soon as we get back within our vehicles, a range of our vehicles, it transmits all of the heart data and everything that we collected on scene. It transmits that to the county, can be used by the medical professionals either for treatment or for post-incident to see did our guys do the right type of compressions? Did they? It's a very extensive quality control process. I said even like the pads, it's consistent with the county's, the county paramedic's machine. So when the paramedic arrives, they don't have to put new pads on, they simply unplug them and plug them into their more sophisticated heart monitor. So those cost us, budgeting at $1,700. The good thing is we get to take advantage of a countywide contract for those. Total cost for the three defibrillators is about $5,000. Again, the county would share the cost of that 37.8%, which is again our cost share amount, which leaves us paying for about $31.50 for those three defibrillators. So when you take those four units and what I'm summarizing here is just our cost because there's the grant funding that we refer to on the message board, the county cost share on some of these items, these four items come up to just over $38,000 in service equipment requests. So with that, I'll answer any questions you may have on these items or the service equipment budget.
For the defibrillators, I see that you have that they expire in 2023, the year. Is there a month on them or is it strictly?
So it's based on the year of, excuse me, the month of manufacture.
Okay.
I think we've got like two that are January and one it is March. They are within this budget year though, and that's what we base them on is the, when they expire during the budget year.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Do the old ones have any use whatsoever or are they donated or?
Yeah, so the, the old ones, the county helps us maintain a certain number of them. So what we would do is we would move the older ones to some of our less likely to be on a medical call. For example, the water tanker doesn't run a lot of medical calls. So we move one of those older units to that vehicle so that it has a functioning unit, but it's not, it's no longer a frontline unit. We maintain those frontline units within that five-year timeframe. And then once, once they're no longer, the vendor will a lot of times take them in for trade when they get to the point that we want to, our oldest ones, when we move those out, a lot of times the vendor will take them in on trade for the new equipment.
One quick question, Chris. So the message boards that I see around town now, they're all borrowed?
They're all borrowed, either borrowed or rented. Occasionally, if we have a need for more than we can, so let's say we just really needed some during state fair week, sometimes we may have to rent those from like a rental company or something.
So the ones I see around town now, what are they?
I believe they are all borrowed, because we borrowed two from EMS and one from Nite Dell, I believe.
Thank you.
What is your, the life expectancy on this fire safety house?
I don't know. It's something I can look and see, how long they would expect it to perform. I would expect it would be quite a while, again, much like a bouncy house and it can be repaired. But I can see if that company has any like a life expectancy of that. Yes, ma'am.
And has any thought been given as to where the inflatable house would be stored when it's not in use? Because I would have to assume that it's not going to be in use for significant periods of time.
Right. It would either be stored, we have a storage building at the station and then we have a different storage building down, it's at the recycling center. And both of those are kept dry and that type of, we store spare hose and that type of thing. So it would be stored in there.
Because I know that some of those types of items can be affected by dry rot?
That's right.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Is there a cost with borrowing them, those message boards? Is there a cost associated with that?
No. The county, as an example, the county maintains a certain number of those message boards. As long as they're available, we can, we can borrow those at no cost.
Thank you.
Okay, curious, are they battery or generator?
I think they're battery powered, but then they're solar recharged with, most of them are recharged with the solar. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have rolled out two of the capital funds to you. We'll continue that process in the next two work sessions where we will present capital funds and we will describe to you the recommendations. While they are our recommendations, it's your budget. So you know now what you can choose to fund and how to fund it. And if you choose to fund something differently, you'll know how much funds are available to appropriate elsewhere. So again, that concludes the capital budget presentations. We're going to now transition into the operating budget. Last week, with the FY '23 budget handout, we included inserts for Parks and Rec, Fire Department, and the Operations Division of Public Works. Even though the Public Works memo and spreadsheet includes both divisions, we were focusing the conversation tonight on operations. So what we will put before you and be prepared to answer is, do you have any questions or comments on any of the memos or spreadsheets presented? So just bear in mind that those reflect the department head requests. When you look at the budget that I presented, there will not always be a match. And so you will, this will be an opportunity for you to clarify what did not get recommended or even to request clarification on what was recommended. So those, that's the questions and comments. Above and beyond that, if you have any requests related to any of those departments or just requests in general, that we can come back to you at the next work session to bring you some information, we're open for that as well. So with that, we stand ready to answer any questions or comments that you have on those three requested budget memos and spreadsheets. And the department heads are available to answer any questions. And if there's any general requests that you have related to those items or something else that we can bring back as information for you to consider at the next work session, we're prepared to take that as well. So with that, we'll turn that over to the board for any questions, comments, or requests.
Could we get a current listing of staff and salaries?
Yes.
Hearing none. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on what's been presented tonight? Hearing none. We'll move down to new business.
Mayor, excuse me, we wanted to give the board a preview of work session number two and we had, we wanted to provide a link or explain a link that will help, we hope, engage more people in the public input and it's actually called Public Input, that's what the software is. So as far as work session number two, we will hand out at the conclusion of tonight's meeting, again, memorandums and spreadsheets for the department's planning, I'm sorry, police department planning. We will also hand out the proposed fee schedule, so you'll get the full fee schedule. The changes to the fee schedule are highlighted in yellow, so we'll be prepared to answer any questions that you've got related to the fee schedule. We will also hand out to you tonight the next round of capital requests and recommendations related to the facility fund and the parks fund. Those are, those are divisions within that property management as well as the community and economic development. So that's a foreshadowing of what's coming your way at the second work session. And I'd like to recognize Parks and Rec Director Sheila Long to walk you through the public input platform that we are offering to the community just to engage more people to provide input on the budget process.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the board. As Joe just shared, we have been utilizing a software called Public Input to navigate expanding how we engage our community. So this is the software, like Parks and Rec has been piloting it. And so we utilize this software for newsletters and surveys. The planning department has also been utilizing it following us as well. So it's a great tool, great resource, and we wanted to show what it could do for our budgeting process. And so we have developed a landing page that will walk through this budget cycle throughout the month. And as you continue to have your work sessions and get new information, there'll be a landing page for each work session. So this website has just a brief summary with the introduction straight from your budget message from Joe Moore. And then they can scroll through each section so they can see what was recommended and provided earlier, or I guess last week. This next link would have what would have been reviewed tonight, so kind of like your, what would be an agenda, very similar to that, just the order of what information would be shared in this evening or in this meeting. And once you've received the information, the next day, we can load this information. We can also take your YouTube video from this meeting and add it to this page so that community members can come back and review that and look at the information. And as, in this document section, as we build, the links will continue. So they don't have, if they just go to one and they start clicking through, they could see them all as well. It's not going to be as clunky to go through. But you can see each section, it's the same for each work session night. And then there's also this comments and input section. And so because, well, we're recommending that comments can be summarized by the town clerk and then reported out at the public hearing at your first meeting in June. And so here, they would be able to provide their name and address and a contact number. And the contact number is mainly just if we were to run into an issue with the comments or their address, we could clarify for this written segment. And then they have an area here to provide their comments as if they were in person. Do you have any questions? Yes.
Any comments from anyone so far?
We have not released it because we wanted to share it with the board first. This is something that we realized that our budget, any budget process, not just ours, but any budget process has so much information. And even I was looking at some other organizations and it's just so much to navigate that we wanted to find a way to make it more digestible. And so we worked on this last week and we wanted to share it with the board before it went public.
Which will be?
Tomorrow. Does she have any concerns or questions?
What does the translate button do?
The translate button? So it has, the software has, I couldn't even tell you how we can click on it, but they have a variety of languages that you can click on and it will translate the page so it's readable for them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and as was mentioned at, when we presented the budget, there was a potential conflict for the Wednesday at 6:00. And so we've put before the board three options to buy some additional time by kicking that meeting out an hour to 7:00 PM or moving it to the next day. You've had experience having work sessions start at 4:00, so we threw that out as an option. Or you could hold it at what has been the traditional budget work session time at 6:00 PM or we'll entertain other options. We do need a motion from a board, from the board and a vote from the board to change the Wednesday, May 18th meeting at 6:00 PM to whatever the new meeting date is for the second work session.
Joe, are we still going to be holding a traditional work session that is not budget-related this month?
We do not have one scheduled.
Okay.
May 19th works for me. I like the 4:00 one, but.
4:00.
Yeah, I can't hear you.
The May 19th at 4:00 PM.
Thanks.
Works for me.
That works for me as well.
Same here.
I'm good with it. I'm okay.
So we need a motion.
Does it work for you, Ms. Clark? It works for you as well?
Yeah, I think it works for everyone. I make a motion to change our Wednesday, May 18th meeting to Thursday, May 19th at 4:00 PM.
I second that.
All in favor? Motion passes. Hearing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Motion passes. Meeting adjourned. Meeting adjourned.